I think we have everybody back here, so I'd like to call this regular session of the Park District Board of Commissioners back to order. Our first item of business after having done an executive session for review of executive session minutes is to announce the actions that were agreed to in the executive session. So, we reviewed and approved minutes from the executive sessions of August 14, 2018, September 4 of 2018, and October 9 of 2018. Furthermore, in reviewing what executive session minutes could be made public at this point, we agreed that the August 14, 2018 minutes in its entirety, the September 4, 2018 minutes in its entirety, and for the October 9, 2018 executive session minutes, Sections 1, 2, and 5 could be released. And in terms of destroying, authorizing the destruction of recordings of executive sessions that have occurred more than 18 months ago, we agreed to the destruction of March 14, 2017, March 27, 2017, April 11, 2017, and 13th of June, 2017. And I believe that covers all that we did in the executive session that can be revealed at this point, and so we're on to our regular agenda. I have not seen that. So, the first next item is to accept the remaining pieces of the agenda as presented or else to modify them. I'm not aware of any suggested modifications. Is there a motion to approve these, the agenda, remaining agenda as presented?
I move that we accept the remaining agenda as presented.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that carries unanimously. So, that then brings us to public comment. I do not see anybody from the public present, so I'm assuming there is none. And there are still no new staff introductions. Okay. Let's move on then to the update report, and there was no December meeting, and apparently there was no report in the packet, so...
There was no meeting.
Okay. So, that takes us to the consent agenda. And on this evening's consent agenda, our approval of the regular board minutes of the December 4, 2018 study session, approval of the minutes of the December 6, 2018 joint board meeting with the Champaign Park District for the CU Special Rec, approval of the minutes of the December 11, 2018 regular board meeting, the receipt of our monthly reports from the three departments, Administration, Planning and Operations, and Recreation, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and approval of Commissioner travel, meal, and lodging expenses, approval of employee travel, meal, and lodging expenses, all these related to the upcoming IAPD, IPRA convention. And lastly, action to approve ordinance 2019-01, authorizing sale and disposal of personal property that we deem to be surplus to our needs. So, it is the purview of any single Commissioner to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Is there anybody wishing to remove anything from that consent agenda? Seeing no indication of that, then is there anyone willing to move that we accept all of these items, approve all of these items in an omnibus fashion?
I move to approve all of the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, and under the rules of our consent agenda, there is to be no further discussion. We should hold a roll call vote, given the property disposal involved, so let's, this time we'll start at the right.
Aye.
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 Aye. And that carries unanimously with all four Commissioners present voting. So, that takes us on to our financial reports.
Hello, everyone. I'll be discussing the performance of the Urbana Park District through December of 2018. Get us through the end of the calendar year. We're two-thirds through our fiscal year at this point. So, the first report that I'll discuss is the fund balance report. This is the first of two budget reports. This shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the eight months ending December 31st. The first page is what we call sum one, and this is all funds except for the Capital Improvements Fund. This shows our operating side of our budget. Revenues for this period were $8,653,000, which is an increase of $332,000 since November. Expenditures were $7,078,000, which is a change of $2,041,000 since November, primarily due to bond payments. We have a surplus after eight months, which means there was an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $1,575,000. And net change in fund balance shows an increase in fund balance after eight months of $1,345,000. If you go on to page two, this is just the Capital Improvements Fund. You can see that for this eight-month period, there were revenues of $98.98.5 and expenditures of $665.5. And we have a deficit of expenditures over revenues after this eight months of $567,000. However, then you can see in the next section called Other Sources, we received a transfer in from the English Fund of $229,000. And then we also received our bond proceeds in December of $738,000. So, all in all, after all of those other sources, we have a net change in fund balance of a positive $400,000 at the end of December. But our budget, you can see, is almost a net change in fund balance of a decrease of almost $500,000. So, we have a lot of spending to do left in this next four months, so I'm not sure we'll get there, but we'll see. We're, you know, we're two-thirds in, so we probably have another $400,000 or $500,000. It just depends on how projects move forward this spring.
Keith's looking for change in the couch, you know?
We're doing fine in the Capital Improvements Fund. And then finally, sum three is all funds district-wide. This takes the first two pages and adds them together. And I thought I'd point out that this page is a really nice summary. It matches really nicely the first three pages of the Budget Analysis with History Report. So, it has a lot of the similar totals when you get to the bottom, so I just thought I'd point that out. But you can see some comparisons in those two if you care to look closely. But I did want to just point out that the ending fund balance for the whole district at the end of December is $8,858,000. And following that are the summary reports for the individual working funds, the general fund, the recreation fund, the museum fund, and the indoor pool. And if you, I'm happy to entertain any questions you have about this report, and otherwise we can move on to the Budget Analysis with History.
And given the new accounting system, this is the last time we see this in this precise form. Is that right?
That's my guess. They actually come tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. So, and I, we were...
You're looking good, bro.
Yeah, and I did talk a little about it in my admin report, but we did receive the system in December. And I've done some playing around with reports, and I think we're going to be happy with what we're able to get out of the system. So, I think the only big difference is there's not going to be any transactional history. You know, they're bringing over our balances as of a certain date. And so, the Budget Analysis with History where we're looking at that same three-month period, there is no three-month period in the new system. It's on January 17th. There's a balance of this much. So, it doesn't show that at November 30th there was this, and at December 31st there was this. So, I think we're just going to have to give it some time to build up that history, and I think we'll have a lot more reporting capabilities once we've built that up. So, a couple of years in, I think we're going to be even happier than we are right off the bat. But, so that's the only thing that I think is maybe a downside. And we might want to even bring some of these older reports in to show a comparison for a couple of years to say, you know, this is where we know we are in this, in probably the new fiscal year FY '20, and this is where we were in FY '19 at the same time, for example, because we will still have access to the S-400 even when we stop using it. So, you know, we're not going to move any of our activity over to it that we're putting into BSNA, so there'll still be that stopping point in January 17th. But I think we might still benefit from having that overlap of the two systems for a year or two. So, yeah, I'm excited. It'll be cool. All right, so Budget Analysis with History. Good question, Nancy. This report shows a historical comparison of the same eight-month period for the current year and the three prior years. Eight out of 12 months is 66.6%, so that's a number you can use throughout the report. And the highlights, the first section of this report, the first three pages, is all funds district-wide. You can see we've received 99% of our property tax revenues. We received a couple real small distributions in December that pretty much topped us off. And then I think we're expecting one more, so, which might have actually arrived today. I got a deposit notice, so I think we might be all done. And if you go to page two in the middle there, the revenue total is the total of revenues and transfers in for this period, which were $12,139,000. And you can see, if you look down the expenditures, I try to take a little bit of time to just kind of read across every one of these lines. This is kind of where we track pretty closely. And you can see, for example, contractual service, the dollar amount is really high, but the percentage isn't, and that's because of the pool pack primarily. And then also, I was noticing and doing a little bit of research on page three, the miscellaneous line is pretty low dollar-wise and percentage-wise. And I haven't quite tracked that down. I know part of it, about $20,000 of it, is due to the benefits that need to still be booked into the indoor pool fund. So, that'll go up here in the next week when I book those. So, that's just a timing issue of when those got booked in the system compared to the prior three years. And the other, I think, is just savings off of not having spent as much in the prior three years. So, I don't see anything off when I looked through all the detail of that, of what summarizes up to the miscellaneous. So, I think we're, it's just good performance on the rest of it, so. Other than that, nothing really stood out. You know, we did make our bond payments, so the bond fund expenditures line on this page three is much higher than it was a month ago. You'll see in the Treasurers' report, the bond payments were like 1.6 million. So, so you can see at the bottom of page three, total expenditures and transfers out for this period were $10,393,000, with a surplus at the end of December of $1,746,000. And following that again are the individual fund summary reports, so you can dive a little deeper into detail. Next, I'll touch on the Treasurers' report. The Treasurers' report is the report of the amount of cash that the district has on one day, December 31st, 2018. All 24 funds are listed with where the cash is invested for a grand total at the end of December of $10,538,032.65. Page two, the first section at the top lists the amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts. And I touched on it last year, but I did want to point out a big change this period. I worked with Dick Percival, and we transferred $2,075,000 into Illinois funds. And you can see, if you look at the interest rate line there on the right-hand side, we're getting a better interest rate in Illinois funds than we are, on average, in all of our CDs. So, I really wanted to put more money there, and as the CDs are maturing, I want to analyze whether rates have even gone up enough to reinvest them or if I might just transfer them into Illinois funds too, to wait. So, I told Dick that, you know, we'd really backed out of using Illinois funds much, other than our personal property replacement tax monies we're getting deposited there, when they made a lot of changes to the accounts. But I told, and part of that's because we can't have a checkbook anymore. All the transfers are done on the computer. And with Dick, it's just a little bit more difficult to do that, but we work together, and I make sure that, you know, he's submitting and signing off on all the transfers when we do any money transferring in or out of there. And so, but I told him, going forward, we're probably, you know, now, since it's a very liquid account and it's a balance that we use regularly, that he normally was writing checks out of our savings account for, that he's going to have to transfer in and out a lot more. So, you're going to see more activity or fluctuation in the Illinois funds balance now that I've moved that money over there. But I try to move the stuff that I didn't think I'd need as soon, but there'll be times where I say, okay, time and transfer out or transfer in if we want to add more. So, I'm just tracking that. I wish I'd done it sooner, just that interest rate's been creeping up and creeping up. But it's just, you know, the day-to-day stuff. So, I was glad I finally pulled the trigger and we, we got that money moved over, so I was really pleased.
Do you feel it's safe over there?
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah. That was where all of our property tax money used to go.
That was the cash place to park it years ago, 20 years ago.
No, state was in better shape 20 years ago.
I think they're handling it well.
Okay.
So, I feel really good about it, and you can't beat that interest rate when you look across what we're getting at our, in the savings account it was in, at 0.28%. So...
Yeah, that's not hard to figure out.
Yeah, so I'm really hoping by the end of the year, we'll really see some growth in our interest revenue there, too, that maybe we weren't even planning for, because we really were budgeting off of prior-year performance, so I'm pleased with that. So, just wanted to mention that. So, of the $10,538,000 on hand, $9,123,000 is out in investments. I hope I said both those numbers right. Okay. And the next section there at the bottom is interfund loans. Not, no interfund loans changed this period, and besides our operating loans for payroll and interim, they're stable. And finally, the last section lists disbursements. Vendor payments matched the paid accounts payable on the consent agenda. And you can see a large number in vendor payments in the bond fund, where we made our principal and interest payments for our four bonds. And total disbursements of funds otherwise was fairly normal, and there was a total disbursements of funds of $2,054,000 for this period. Normal to low, I would say. They're pretty.
I move to accept the Treasurers' report for audit. Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries unanimously.
The supplemental report of cash is the next report I'll talk about. This report has the same information as the first page of the Treasurers' report, but groups the information by expected use rather than by fund name. Daily operating funds, restricted special needs, and restricted gifts and donations are the three categories. When I did the restructuring of the chart of accounts, I tried to structure the funds to be more grouped together in this way anyway. So, it'll be interesting to see how our reports look when it's all done. And you can see, of the $10,538,000 available, $1,106 is restricted obligations, leaving $9,432 available as spendable cash. And lastly, I'll touch on the areas in the capital budgets that had activity this period. And you can see, the first page is the 2019 capital budget, which you've never seen in this format before. So, this is new, because we had our first activity in this budget in December, when we received the bond proceeds on December 5th. So, we received $738,065 on that day. And we got right to spending it, and we had a little bit of activity this period, and we spent some on a stump grinding contract. And then we also paid BCA for some design work on the park, the path at Lomond Park. In the 2018 capital budget, we received a $100 donation from Urbana Parks Foundation that was for the Burns Tribute Memorial. The donations were supposed to be directed to the Park District, but that one got sent to the foundation, so that's fine. So, we asked for reimbursement from the foundation twice a year in December and April. So, we just asked for it with our December disbursement, so we could pool all those funds together for the projects we're planning to do with those funds. And, and then on top of that, in the expenditure side, let me see. Oh, sorry. We also, this was more exciting than the $100, I mean, also exciting. We received $4,489 in auction proceeds from the auction of the two-ton dump truck.
Was that an old, flat-out?
The last of the blue and white.
That was a museum piece.
And we'd only budgeted and expected to receive $2,500, and so we beat our expectations by almost $2,000. Very exciting.
Nice. Don't you want to know what Derek's...
Brad Johnson, who has a side business, been on it for a little while, but he was outbid in the end by somebody who, you know, so it's, although a collection piece, it still has a lot of value.
Well-maintained. I mean, relatively, you know, beyond our interest, but it might work for somebody.
That is terrific.
So, and just a side note, and Andy might be talking about this tonight anyway. We applied a portion of that overage, that extra $2,000 we weren't expecting, to go towards an additional amount for the Showmobile purchase. And then the rest just went to general contingency in the budget, so. And other expenditures were paid in the 2018 capital budget towards stump grinding. Parking lot striping occurred at the Weaver Park KRT Trailhead parking lot, and expenditures also occurred down in the contingency section on the Lille Park pathway. And in the 2017 capital budget, we received, the $1,190 up at the top was our distribution from Champaign Park District for the portion of ADA capital projects that we build them for. And expenditures occurred on construction crew projects. Website upgrades came from the technology budget. A gas grill was purchased out of the operating small equipment, which I believe is replacing the Jetty Roads grill. And an EPA permit fee was paid for the ITUP project out of the Trails budget line. And disbursements also occurred on the one-way study that came out of the contingency section out of the Crystal Lake improvements line. And there was no activity in the 2016 capital budget this month, but there's only two items of expenditure remaining. The $197 for the James Room is getting spent whenever they submit their next bill, and then the $500,000 is the transfer from the general fund that was, that's slated for improvements at Crystal Lake Park and anticipated to begin being spent as part of the spring 2019 lake project phase. And now Andy and Derek may have some updates for you on capital projects.
Yep, I'll start with Phillips Recreation Center. After our board meeting last month, we met with the sales rep for the playground. We wanted to see if we could, in any way, revise the layout, incorporate some sort of swinging amenity. Staff had an interest in including an option for swinging. There's no swinging currently available out at the site. It was ranked fairly highly in our charrette activities in the spring and was specifically called out in Canaan Academy to see if we could try to incorporate it in any way. So, we, we were able to do so. We're going to include a, I believe it's called a Volito Swing, which is a large disc that's attached by cables that's able to use by multiple people at once. It's also considered accessible. So, happy to report, we have reworked the layout a little bit, and that order's been placed. We're expecting delivery sometime early March. And staff will begin to disassemble the current playground sometime soon. And with that, we will obviously utilize our channels through social media, the website, and display at Phillips to make sure everyone's aware of the upcoming work that's going to happen there.
Is it all, is it all just sent off to the, to the landfill, the, what's existing there? Or is any of it still safe enough? Could it be used someplace else or by someone else, not necessarily us?
As we pull out pieces, if the pieces that are extracted that come out, you know, reasonably well, we sometimes consider reusing them. I think that the swing set of players, one that got repurposed from Crestview, I think, or was it Southridge? I can't recall.
We did some moving around.
Keith does his best to see if he can, but oftentimes when you're pulling another ground, it distorts and is no longer, you know, truly safe for public use.
Okay, thanks.
With our James Room kitchen, shortly after I reported on the scheduled last board meeting, we were notified by our contractor that there was a miscalculation in lead time for the cabinets, so we're looking at a little longer delay still at this point, hoping to open by March. Stopped by there today. It looked like a lot of the electrical work was completed. The flooring's in. It looks great. The walls are up. It looks like a very nice classroom at this point, but it does not look like a kitchen. So, we'll have the custom cabinets installed probably early, mid-Fbruary. Once those are installed, then the countertops can go in, and then we'll be wrapping up shortly after.
Cool.
I guess I've been thinking about that comment a little bit more, Nancy. When we toured Crystal Lake Park with the OSLAD grant administrator, she told us about a program that does reuse playgrounds, and we're trying to get more information about it. If they're able to provide assistance with extracting equipment and they take responsibility for it, it might be a good fit. We still think Phillips may not be the best fit, because of the age of the equipment, but Crystal Lake Park might be a very good fit.
Oh, right.
We are looking at the program more.
Quick note on, on outdoor pool improvement project. Staff selecting final color selections for our exterior lockers and our interior wallet-sized lockers. We did make a small change with those interior wallet lockers, and now they will match the exterior lockers in material. So, they'll be the phenolic material that we have on the exterior, and they will also be the customer-provided locks now rather than a key system. And with Crystal Lake Park, ERA was conducting surveys the week before Christmas. We're anticipating a base plan any day now. Staff will review and provide feedback on that plan. And then probably early March, we're anticipating a 25% design with the opinion of probable costs associated with that project. And regarding OSLAD, we are eagerly awaiting to hear any day if we will get an invite to present, to ID in our panel into this month. We were notified that it would happen anytime after the 7th.
Is that customary? Have they changed that, the way of doing it?
I mean, over the years, it's changed. Used to be tied to elections, and it was tighter around November, and things start to shift. But whatever they're communicating to you all now is probably what's happening.
The dates change, but the format is still the same, where if you get, make the first cut, you're invited to come present a three-minute presentation on the merits of your project.
It's a large panel that then kind of list into the proposals and look at the rankings and make final decisions.
Good. I'm sure we'll be on that shortlist.
Thanks very much. Moving on then to the Executive Director's report.
Couple of things. Happy New Year to everybody and to everyone in Urbana. Starting off, just sort of a touch on my, one of my topics in the board report was on climate change. Just wanted to explain a little more about that. I think staff's been talking about that for many years. That's not a new topic to us. It's not something that is, is surprised to us. But I think we're really starting to focus on maybe looking a little more closely at how we can link some of our goals, how we begin to work with our local partners, and what are some things that we should be looking at that are likely to change first. If you've been paying attention, the News Gazette's done a really good job, I think, of covering some articles on, you know, severe weather, has done a kind of review of different plant adaptations, and also looking at cold hardiness zones and shifting. Obviously, we're in the plant business, so that's a big part of what we do. So, kind of just making sure that, you know, we're looking forward to what kind of changes could be coming and how would that begin to impact us. I think in the research, when you start looking, at least in landscape architecture, the whole concept of resiliency is really becoming very important. I remember a number of years ago when they started kind of promoting resiliency and, you know, efforts to do that. I didn't really kind of understand that, what's the difference between sustainability and some of those, those terms. But really, I think there's a lot of new emphasis on looking at construction and materials, plant selection, site design, water cycles, everything tied to drainage, you know, that really rely around resiliency. Obviously, depending on where you live, if you're on the coast or in areas that could really be impacted with wildfires or things like that, it means a lot more, basically adapting your whole lifestyle so that you can maybe weather a situation. More recently, I was talking with Mary Ellen Woolner at the Champaign County Forest Preserve. They're also very interested in this. The city of Urbana has a whole sustainability program, so I'm suggesting staff begin to work with our local partners, talk about what goals they're trying to seek, and see, see what kind of opportunities we could sort of weave in into our, our programming. You know, we have a green team. They're very focused on... We have a green team, they're very focused on anything that relates to the environment. So again, I think kind of doing our part. The last point I'd make too on that is, at least what I've read in the information that's out and about, it's more likely to see more direct applications at the state or local level. Obviously, federal, it's difficult. You're really talking nationwide approaches. Where down to the local level, you have a lot more control autonomy. So again, I would expect to see some maybe new goals in the next fiscal cycle that relate or linked or tied to one of those aspects. Did want to talk about, hopefully, again, speaking about the news, that you're tracking some new positive developments that have been at least slated for Urbana. There's the new housing development in the southeast corner at the Lincoln and University corridor there. There's also a more recent one slated for that northeast corner of the Lincoln University area. And also a proposed potential downtown development that'll incorporate the arts and culture. That's along Illinois Street there. So again, it's really good news, something we've been pushing for years is we need new growth, we need smart growth. Obviously, if you're in a tax capped agency situation, new growth is really where any new revenue could be found. But also, I think Urbana's been well slated for catching that wave of development that we're seeing happen in other places. So really excited about that. I would mention with those two properties or developments on the Lincoln University Avenue, as we continue to talk about expanding the KRT and how we could make linkages and the recent study, we kind of worked with the graduate studio that looked from Lincoln over to Kaufman Lake. Certainly, all fits into that parameter of how do we get people around as things come. Older talk of a medical campus at the U of I, likely it sounds like toward the north end of the campus. Don't know for sure. But as we see a little more density start to come there, we need to be thinking about transportation, ways people get around, open space, and how do we provide that? Certainly corridors can help with all of those things. So some positive things to start the year out. Just wanted to report that we did acquire in our permanent collection, the Sculpture Marker that's located at the Wondell Sculpture Garden. We now own that. That was made possible with an anonymous donor and portions of our Robin Hall Sculpture Fund. So we're real pleased about that. That was a piece that we had looked at for a long time, hoping we'd have a donor situation arise there. Just a reminder, several of us and a few of the board members will be attending the IAPD, IAPR annual conference. It's coming up in a few weeks. We're all, the folks that are going are definitely looking at some of the topics, but I just want to remind everyone, we have three Urbana Park District presentations or programs that'll be offered. Really proud of our staff that's involved with that. It's been a number of years since we've had a lot of staff involved, really excited about that, so we're pleased. Noted in the new edition of the Parks and Rec Magazine, if you haven't read, in Jason Anselmann's article section, he talks about IAPD's effort in putting together last research report, the statewide results of agency facilities and program usage, which we participated in. We submitted information to that. But the short story is, there's a lot of interest in Parks and Rec, demand on facilities. Park interest is growing at every level. Where he kind of moves into is sort of that hope we all have is that there'll be a new capital bill or a re-inmigration of our grant programs. Couple that we look at that, at least were available 10 years ago, was the Park Grant, the P-A-R-C Grant, and the Museum Grant, which we actually did receive funding multiple times on the Museum Grant. So we look forward to meeting with our legislators to even find out if they, what they know or just kind of share that message and information that IAPD has put together. I think that's one of the greatest things IAPD, in my opinion, does in addition to just managing our agencies, but some of the research that they do. And obviously, they rely on the agencies and the practitioners to supply a lot of information. But it really does spread across the state and provides a lot of benefits. Let's see. Just a reminder, as we're at that kind of new year point, we'll be getting to work on our budgets and new goals. So if there's goals the board's thinking about, keep them in mind. We'll have an opportunity to reach out to you all to see what's important to you and how we carry that forward in the next few months. Let's see, I think that's all. Oh, last, I think I've repeated it and it's probably in Michael's notes there, but we do have the IAPD Legislative Breakfast coming up, March 11th. It's slated right now for the Phillips Rec Center. But we'll be working with staff leaderships of the other agencies to talk about themes. But again, if you have something you're really interested or concerned about, let me know. I'll share that with Joe and Mary Ellen and some of the other folks that'll be involved. But generally, we talk about what type of theme or message do we want to convey there. Lately, it's been about $4 in grants. So obviously, we all, in my quick review with them, they were very much in need of additional outside funding to carry out their mission. So, but again, if you think of a critical topic or a concern, just let me know. Can you answer any questions about any other things going on, if you have any?
Thank you, Jim. Moving on to the president's report, upcoming meetings. We have a study session on the 5th of February. And we should be getting a presentation from the School for Designing a Society. They did commit to providing us information about what their ask is at least a week in advance of that. So I hope there will be something that we can distribute to the full board as soon as we obtain those materials. So we have a chance to be prepared for that part of the study session. And also the ongoing goals review. And then our regular board meeting on the 12th of February includes annual recreational statistics report and semi-annual review of status regarding strategic initiatives that kind of blends in with the goals review. And presumably, there will be some bid approvals. In terms of holding the Legislative Breakfast at Phillips, is that going to work out okay if the kitchen is not fully done?
Otherwise, we're going to Andy's house.
We have the three rooms as well. I think we'll be just, if we have to set the tables up, food in the room, we'll do that. But hopefully, we should be.
It does make the catering a little more difficult, but still possible, I figure.
Just to mention, we do have a number of other building improvements we were hoping to sort of show off a little bit. Obviously, it's not the purpose of the meeting, but we should feel good about that. And our hosting duties rotate about every other year. So we'd have to wait, which certainly we can do that, we have other places. But just thought it might be good to change the location and create a little bit of newness to the event.
So moving on to the liaison reports, the finance study group met last Friday, I think it was. So, and some of the items on that, one of the major things obviously was discussed in the executive session here today. So I think that covered a good bit of it. Also, Andy and Derek's report on the capital stuff, some of that was covered as well. And a report on the new accounting system. So I assume there will be more details coming forward in the future on that. It sounds like Katie and the staff have a lot of work ahead of them, starting tomorrow. Not that it hasn't been a lot already, but.
A lot more effort this next week or two.
Yeah, pretty exciting stuff. And we are meeting again, I believe, on the, is it the 8th of March? Wait a second. Anyway, we are meeting again, not in February, but at the beginning of March. It's my recollection on that. February 8th? Oh, excuse me. Well, okay, that just shows you how good my brain is. Okay, sorry about that. So yes, in between the study session and the regular board meeting. Policy study group, is there anything to report there?
No, we haven't met since.
I think we met the same little last board meeting. We met the same day as last December's board meeting. But I did want to mention, we probably have some new policy things we definitely want to get together again. So we'll be reaching out.
Yeah, so I think if the time right before the board meeting works out, like it did this time, to get together around 5:30 or 6:30, we'd love to meet again sooner than later. So maybe next board meeting.
But there was something that we were going to run by.
My recollection is I thought you guys reported in the December meeting. Because we had the meeting right before the board meeting and then you guys did update the report. Because I looked it up and I thought, gee, it's funny, we did meet the same day. So if you were thinking of reporting, you've already done it. That efficient.
When it was fresh.
Because I needed that too, so I looked it up. But we'll be reaching out.
The Parks Foundation represented?
They meet Monday, they haven't met since their last meeting.
And is there anything on the Uptech Planning Study Group?
I hope we haven't met because I don't remember.
That was, I met with Melissa because she will be out January, February, and we had some scheduling changes the day of, so I went ahead and met. We kind of got a slate of things, we'll loop back and get them lined up with everybody.
But LaShonda and I haven't.
Yes.
But things are in fine shape.
Yes.
No, I don't believe there are any concerns.
Like always, we have probably too many exciting programs and not enough time to fit them in.
So moving on to old business, review of the 2019 annual actions calendar.
As we recall, I think we presented this last month, there was a suggested change. Has been corrected.
What was it?
It's just one thing.
I think it moved a month of, pardon?
It was just moving the date you would consider the Uptech charge.
Yeah, right.
Ah, okay. That I remember.
I had to think, I thought it was just one thing.
And I'm not sure that this actually requires any formal approval.
I think it's either way, it's more of a guideline, things we follow too. It's sort of a way we track progress and make sure things get done.
Any questions or comments on this revised document?
We can make any other changes if there were, if it was desired, but I think that was the only one that was called out.
Hearing none, let's move along then. There was no old business removed from the consent agenda, so we're now on to new business, action to award purchase of a portable stage.
Back to planning and operations.
So the portable stage is our only item that we have in our 2019 capital vehicles and equipment budget plan. The portable stage, or what we've been calling the Showmobile, is something that I think the board is aware, staff have been researching and planning for the past few years, really in order to improve the visibility of our district at our events, but also to prepare for increasing opportunities for events at rehabbed Crystal Lake Park as we see Weaver Park Trailhead develop and with our outreach opportunities and events in neighborhood parks. Actually, at the last NRPA Exhibit Hall, we found what ended up being our preferred option of portable stage. And what really started leaning us into that direction was the ease of setup and takedown. What we had been reviewing was a stage line model, which we are familiar with from our Jetty Roads events. And it's a multi-person, multi-hour setup and takedown. It's a good stage, it just takes a lot of manpower, basically. So what we found with the Century Companies model is that it's literally a push button, 10 to 15 minutes setup, 10 to 15 minute, one person takedown. Very similar stage, similar price range, similar look, ability to customize our graphics around the outside and make sure that we show our logo very prominently at events and during transport and storage. So we were more than excited for this new opportunity and what we had found, you know, pretty close to what, you know, our year to purchase the actual portable stage. So we did our due diligence to make sure that we weren't just hearing great things from the salesperson. We did at least five different reference checks, including doing some investigation on other organizations that own a Century model that was not provided as a reference from the company. And we really received nothing but positive feedback. And we're told that, yes, it is as good as it sounds. You push a button and it unfolds, and you push a button and it closes back up. There's a little bit of manpower work you have to do to kind of release some things and put the stage in, or the stairs in, but that's pretty much it. So after we had some good reference checks, Derek and Janet actually drove to Sellersburg, Southern Indiana.
Which is the other big selling point for the stage. It's not from Canada.
Although it'd make an interesting trip.
They were able to go to the company and actually get a hands-on view of the stage and how it works and had positive reports from that experience as well. So we were ready to move forward with our bid. And we wanted to bring it to the January meeting because there is a pretty long lead time associated with it. It's 90 to 120 days. But we want to make sure, or do our best to make sure that we can have it available in May to prepare ourselves for the upcoming summer season of events. Also, we want to have it available in May because $50,000 of the budget is from bond funds for capital and $50,000 will be coming from a rec operating transfer in FY '20, so the next fiscal year.
So we look forward to that.
But even if it came earlier, you could use the working cash fund surely to cover that, so.
I just wanted to jump in and highlight one, what an excellent job staff does. We do really well with researching, but this was particularly critical because while we have needed it, wanted it, could see it working really well for a number of years. How to operate it and the number of staff has been a real concern. And the typical type programs, cultural, arts-related, don't often have a lot of budget. The partners we work with don't have a lot of budget or staff, so that's really critical. You know, when we look at 40 North, it's Kelly White and all of the volunteers that help. So if you commit to something, it's one person that, so ease of operation, training, safety, you know, making sure that was really smooth was really critical. So I'm very pleased that the reporting back is very positive. Obviously, until we own it and operate it and have our own experience, you know, we'll know for sure. But everything seemed to line up. But those operational things are often the budget killers. You know, if you have to add three or four more staff to an event just to make it go, that's hard. It's hard to offer more.
Particularly if you need them at both ends.
Thank you, Michael, because sometimes you think, well, an hour before, an hour. Generally, you can't send those people home, so we'll try to incorporate them in or somehow minimize their efforts, but staffing labor is really critical.
And Janet and I had both helped with the stage line one at Jetty Roads Day.
Right.
The next day, I couldn't have done it by myself. It was fairly complicated. Knox Entertainment, who rents the stage to us, has a guy that's dedicated, who does that routinely throughout the year. That's his job. We do a lot of things, we have a lot of staff, we throw in different jobs throughout the year. And so this has some clear advantages in terms of that as well. That's why Janet and I both wanted to go see that it really did what it promised to do and we were impressed.
How do you move it around?
With the trucks, pickup trucks.
It's like a trailer attachment. And no special trucks needed, you know. If you had to buy another truck, that's a challenge.
And how long have they been on the market?
I think nine years. Oh, nine years for this stage.
For this stage model, it's been around for, I think, 30, 40 years.
Yeah, but, okay, but even this particular design has been around long enough that if it had major maintenance problems, you ought to have heard about it.
Well, the guy, one of the reference guys had it for a long time too, didn't he?
Yeah, I think he had, he said one of the, like, the first model year out. And for, I think, two years later, they had like an issue with maintenance. And they worked with the company and the company didn't, just helped them out, provided replacement parts, didn't charge them anything, really quick turnaround. And then what they found out was that it wasn't the fault of the stage. It was, they were using an overpowered, I think, drill and were actually damaging the part routinely and having to get it replaced. And then they figured out it was how they were doing it and not the actual.
There's some leg adjustments that take place. There's some leg adjustments that take place, and that's what they were using the drill for. But the main stage is all hydraulic. It's really pretty ingenious how simple it is. It's basically like a giant car door. The guy who owns the company, along with his head engineer, were very proud of the stage. And it's a quality apparatus.
I think we could... Go ahead.
Do you have a picture?
We've seen a photo, we can send you all a picture of it. If, we don't have one tonight, I don't know if handy.
We could probably pull one up if the board was interested.
It's cool, it's very neat. And just a few other things while we're... You know, often we go to conferences, you'll see a lot of exciting equipment. It's very easy to fall in love with something and think it's great, and they're telling you great things. But then when we go back and really grind it out with users, other not-listed users going to visit. So we really needed to make sure this was a solid. And there weren't a lot of choices. There weren't 10 other companies that would have different options or models. So there's essentially the two major providers. Not saying there aren't any in the world out there, but it's pretty neat.
There was a third vendor at the NRPA conference that we were not as interested in.
And then the other point, you know, we continue to be encouraged, asked, cajoled into participating and supporting more events and activity. We want to do that, certainly as we talk about Crystal Lake and kind of coming back for larger community events like this would fit in nicely. So I think it'll get used well. You know, our hope is that all of our major events, neighborhood nights, the bigger musical events, that we would have access, you know, and use it. I'm not suggesting we're in the rental business, seeing it rented out, things like that. I think what we've learned in most things, things don't often get taken care of as well if it's a rental. So maybe on a limited or a select approach. But I guess what I mean is our goal isn't to try to recover the cost in a rental arrangement. Because then I think you start to wear down the quality and, you know, wear and tear. If it gets dented up, scratched, doesn't look so good.
Yeah, you can't help that, even people who make children.
And it just folds up into that little thing.
Wow, that's nice.
And here's some custom graphics.
These are some of the companies we...
Nice.
Cold cold, they weren't necessarily references, but...
And we got the custom graphics as part of the...
Yeah, that was one of the options.
Oh, and are those the light bars up there on the, on the back?
That's a nice image there.
How terrific is that?
You notice, like, the back canopy is off on that shot. So you could have a back if it was windy or what have you.
A lot of the other stages use a rigid wall material. And this being more of a heavy-duty target won't affect the acoustics negatively.
Oh, good choice.
And you said that video that shows it opening, or is that on another site? I thought at one point we saw. It's not a big deal, but it was kind of neat.
We're so into it now.
We tell staffs, really fascinated, we love this stuff, it's real exciting, it's terrible stuff. But it does seem, you know, when we saw the video and it looked real smooth and simple, you know, we became suspicious.
Yeah, too good to be true.
Right, you know, one of those things. Okay. Okay, that was it, maybe it showed it in stages opening, kind of gives you an idea how it works.
Well, I'd be proud if I talked that out myself.
It is, it's pretty ingenious.
Really, I mean, that's extraordinarily ingenious.
Looks really slick.
Yeah, it does.
Kind of changes the whole atmosphere, you know, of the event.
Nice.
Nice, good choice.
So, you know, we've had that debate over the years, look, do we really need this, how critical? But you can see it has a huge impact, and it changes a ho-hum event or just a decent event into...
Right, sure, it's into something special, yep.
You know, has that crowd appeal, right? And then there's all the ease and the benefits of the performers having a good and comfortable space, you know, to work out of.
How does it do with rain and wind?
It's all structurally, you know, engineered to withstand heavy winds, it's fine in rain. It's been weather-tested. I remember at the NRPA conference in St. Louis, Corky sort of dragged me over to check out the stage. And he's like, what would you think about something like this? And so it has been many years that we've been looking and researching this and...
Well, and we had a previous experience that wasn't really the best, you know, when we, years ago, when we purchased Champagne Park District's older portable stage. Obviously, you know, it valued us, we used it, but, you know, it was toward the end of its life. And it, you know, it was challenging to get it to be operable. And obviously, then the new wave of stages started coming out, you know, that became obsolete. So, we were very careful at going into this, so. I think we were, if it was more of a hassle, we'd rather just stick with flat stages and, you know, not have the amenity. So, it did pan out.
I will mention that, you know, in terms of the wind, you know, if you do get gale-force winds, and you want to take it down, the advantage is that you press a button to take it down with the wind maybe.
Yeah, you don't have to go all over it, yeah, yeah.
And you probably don't want your audience there either.
We've had that happen. Jarvey Jam.
My move, we award the bid of $78,050 for a portable stage with options 1 through 10, bringing the total of $201,367 with a 5% contingency of $5,068 to Century Industries of Sellersburg, Indiana.
Second.
That's been moved in second, is there any further discussion? This should require a roll call vote, starting at the left.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all four commissioners voting. So, pretty exciting.
Yeah, it is, can't wait.
And the next item of business is action on an audit, an audit services agreement with Martin and Hood LLC.
Just a quick intro, at the finance study group, we brought this to everyone's attention, and I think so it's had some preview. Katie was going to talk about it, give us the background and tell us all about it.
So, yeah, we talked about this at the finance meeting. I asked Greg for a proposal for another three-year contract with Martin Hood. Kind of projecting the change in the accounting software, it would be a difficult time for me to solicit proposals from auditors in the January timeframe when I'd need to be doing that. And also, I just think the consistency with having the same audit firm that's familiar with the district audit us through the old system into the new system would be helpful. You know, we made similar justifications when I became business manager, that we wanted some consistency with Dottie leaving and me taking over. The, you will see, if you read the proposal, they are suggesting they're going to change the partner on our engagement. It was Mark Sis for the last three or four cycles, and now the new partner is Mitch Schluter. So I'm not familiar with him, so. And then the audit onsite supervisor is changing as well because Rebecca, who was with us, who was in charge of our audit onsite, left the firm to move back home. So, one of the assistant supervisors will be taking over as the lead for the coming years if the board is favorable to appointing Martin Hood as our auditor.
Katie, is there any legal requirement? I mean, could we have them audit our stuff for the next 500 years and it would be...
Yeah, so with, like, I was explaining to the board finance study group, there's legal requirements for publicly traded companies. So if you, you know, are selling your stocks and you have SEC oversight, and there's requirements about changing your auditors every five years. So it's certainly a best practice, though, to have transparency and, you know, fresh eyes on your books.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
So, but there's no legal requirement for governments to change auditors, any local governments at all. And, and to be honest, if there's good reasons, I think, like, like we've presented, I think that there's reasons not to. But, but also, I think just changing that partner, changing those eyes, even within the same company, is the same effect. So, I feel pretty comfortable with it, and I really value Greg, you know, he's kind of like a mentor to me anytime I have questions. And so I, that relationship's really important to me too. So, you know, I'm not against at all soliciting proposals. I guess I'm just asking the board and would recommend that we just do another three years and see where that leads us.
Yeah, I think that makes good sense. I, somewhere in the back of my brain, it was that we were required to change auditors, but if we're not...
We're not.
And there are this many internal changes on their part, it seems reasonable.
So I'm happy to answer any questions, but...
I did have one.
Sure.
Which is, you know, they list out here that in making their estimate of the costs, that they take into consideration the anticipated cooperation and so on. The following situations are examples of unexpected circumstances. And the second bullet point, total federal and state grant expenditures exceeding $300,000, triggering the Illinois GADA requirement. I mean, we're going to be having more than $300,000 this year. Is that going to trigger something and they can turn around and say, we should be able to charge you more for this audit?
Yeah, so if we, if we do expend more than $300,000 in grant funds in one year, GADA will require us to get a single audit or have additional procedures performed. So, until we do that spending, so that's not within the scope of this proposal. So we'd, that would be additional charges. So I do think that's important, though, to point out to the board.
So the I-TAP is going to trigger that.
Likely, although it depends on the timing of the spending, so if it's spread out...
If it's split over two fiscal years.
It may not, it may not bridge that.
Some of the grant programs require auditing, just a little history. You know, when I started doing grants, there was no auditing requirement. Later, maybe 10 or so years later, some of the programs require sort of an audit of that, and so we've had to pay separately. So, that's what I'm saying, some of those requirements continue to change over, over time.
The Ozly Grant Program, for example, requires what they call like an informal audit, so it's not a full-blown audit. And that's actually part of your grant application, is budgeting funds for that. And as things have moved into the GADA, which is now the state IDNR's portal for grant funds as well, I think we're seeing more of these requirements moving forward.
I'm pretty sure we had to do that for Crystal Lake Pool.
There may indeed be extra charges beyond what they quoted.
Right, that's kind of what I was going to say, Michael, we might have to pay at the grant level, as it's required. And then through this, I guess the staff perspective is transparency is a good thing and, you know, we'll afford as much of it as required.
Yeah, and I really think that the quoted prices on page three are kind of minimums. So if there's any of these unexpected items, those are going to be billable on top of this base fee. So, yeah, that's good to be clear about.
So we ought to budget more than the...
We will have to budget more than the 23 for those unexpected circumstances.
And presumably, any other firms likely are going to quote higher or for that as well, I would presume. So is there anyone willing to move that we...
My move, that we award a three-year contract for fiscal years 2019, 2020, and 2021 to Martin Hood, at cost of $70,500 for the three-year period.
Second.
That's moved in second, is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting at the right this time.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all four commissioners voting. So that brings us down to comments from commissioners. Do you have any comments tonight?
I heard somebody talking on the radio the other day about Dr. G's Brainworks. They are working with several nursing homes locally, and I wondered if that would be a good group for Jacob to get in touch with. They have, they have a lot of really interesting ideas in it. I am assuming that it's Urbana folks that are behind it, because I think it's, I think it's Phyllis Gingold and her family that are doing that. They were at Lincoln Square and now they're, I know that matters, but anyway, it sounded like it was something that was right up Jacob's alley.
What was the beginning of what you said, Dr. G's Brainworks?
I haven't heard of it.
They are out, I think he said by Dick's Sporting Goods, is that at Marketplace?
It's by Dick's.
But they have, I mean, they have a range of, you know, 0 to 100 age kinds of different brain activity kinds of things. But they worked a lot on cognition, and have you dealt with them?
I have not, I've not even heard of them, but there's...
Oh, I'm just shocked.
Oh, sorry.
But they, I mean, they have a lot of interesting things.
Yeah, it's supposed to be all like stimulating things for kids. I bought a dot-to-dot color book where the highest number of dots is like 1,900.
That might be more than my brain can handle. Anyway, it...
You should go in there sometime.
Yeah, that might be frightening, yeah. But it just, I mean, they, they sounded, they sounded like they were interested in acting locally, which I thought was, was very good. And I think they have chess, they have chess lessons, chess championships, chess, all sorts of chess things that they're really working on, on a local basis.
Good lead.
I'm excited about the Showmobile, good job, I'm excited.
So you're going to make the opening of it as part of the show, you know? Cue the music.
Could you give the board a little private show?
We ought to have a launching with a bottle of water or something, you know, just like...
There you go, yeah.
Yeah.
We agree, because we've rented for so long and not had access to, so just having our own thing is going to be awesome.
What's the ballpark cost of renting one from Knox?
$2,000.
Oh!
And my recollection, don't we get a, we get a fairly steep discount on that, I think.
It's like half off.
About half, is my recollection.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so we've kind of, that's what kind of brought us along of...
And that's one that doesn't work as well.
That's just one event.
Yeah, yeah.
So technically, I only need $48,000 from the recreation budget, I should...
But it makes, it makes sense to take, yeah.
Any other comments? Hearing none, and I think we've exhausted our agenda, and I'll declare us adjourned.